All right. All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two. We'll call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with a roll call.
Sybittson.
Yes.
Rickroll.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Collister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Okay, next is the public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we have an approval for tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Got a move by Lyon, seconded by Holm. Okay, no discussion. Take the roll.
Rickroll.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Collister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Sybittson.
Yes.
Okay, now we're moving to consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting. Bills payable through December fifth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eight cents. The release of a mortgage at four-ten South Niagara for a housing rehab loan, and the renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license, living quarters, catering, and Sunday sales filed by the Decker Hotel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Collister, seconded by Coleman. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Collister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Sybittson.
Yes.
Rickroll.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item seven is presentation. We'll start off with Sickich on our FYI twenty twenty-one audit.
Nick, can you hear me?
Yes, I guess.
I gave you co-hosting privileges, so I think you should be set.
Excellent.
We're not able to hear you very well, just FYI.
Can you hear me okay, Josh?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, well, good evening. Thank you to the mayor and members of city council for having me here tonight to present the results of the city's audit as of the most recent fiscal year and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Ultimately, as part of the audit process, we issue a few separate reports. I'll go through the annual financial report and the single audit report with you tonight. We also issue the city's board communication. At the end of my presentation, I'd also be happy to address any questions that council might have as part of this year's audit. At a very high level, just wanting to provide a description of the opinions that we issued as part of this year's audit. The first bullet point there is the unmodified opinion on the city's basic cash basis financial statements. The second bullet point is the unmodified opinion on compliance with major federal awards. It's also known as the single audit. And then also the unmodified opinion on internal control over financial reporting in accordance with government auditing standards. Unmodified opinions are the opinions you want to see as part of every audit. They are the clean opinions and the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide the city as part of an annual audit. Finally, we assist with the DOT Street Finance Reporting, the DOT Annual Financial Report, and the Data Collection Form associated with the city's Single Audit Report. So that's a very high-level agenda. I will go through some items in the annual financial report and the Single Audit Report. And again, I just wanted to reiterate, I'd be happy to address any questions that council might have. So, starting in the annual financial report, this is page one of the independent auditor's report, which is a few pages long, and it might look a little bit different from years past, and that relates to some changes in auditing standards, which essentially reorganized where the content of the auditor's opinion is located on the independent auditor's report. So logically, they located the opinion to the first section of the report and put that right in front, which makes sense. So as far as covering the highlighted items, again, we have audited the cash basis financial statements of the city's governmental activities, the business-type activities, which include the utility funds, the discreetly presented component unit, which is the McCoqueta Electrical Utility, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. That second section here of highlights indicates that we did not audit the financial statements of the McCoqueta Municipal Electric Utility. However, as they are discreetly presented component unit, those financial statements are properly disclosed in the city's financial statements as well. This following paragraph here just reinforces the opinions that I previously covered and document that based on our audit and report of other auditors, the McCoqueta Electrical Utility Report, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position on a cash basis for those governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information. So I wanted to commend the city for obtaining this opinion. Again, this is the highest level of assurance that we can provide during an annual audit and indicates that ultimately the financial statements indeed are free of material misstatement. Shifting down to the second page of the independent auditor's report, I wanted just to reinforce the responsibilities of management and the responsibilities of us as the independent auditors. Ultimately, it is city management and the finance department's responsibility for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As the auditor, it's our role to develop an opinion based on certain audit procedures and tests that are outlined through separate sets of standards, the first being standards set by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and then also standards set by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which dictate how the report is formatted and the content within that report. Finally, on the fourth and final page of the independent auditor's report, the final paragraph is documenting the other reporting required by government auditing standards. I wanted to note this to council tonight, as this paragraph refers to the Single Audit Report, which is a separate issued report that's issued in accordance with government auditing standards because of the grant spending that occurs at the city, which we'll touch on here shortly. So great, great news on the opinion. As we move into the financial statements themselves, we'll start with the governmental funds balance sheet. So this balance sheet includes all of the city's major governmental funds, and by major funds, they are funds that have the highest volume of activity, either from an asset, revenue, or expenditure standpoint. So if there are major funds, they are audited more thoroughly in accordance with what standards calls for. So you'll note the general fund, capital projects fund, Platt Street Reconstruction, library and road use tax were audited as major funds this year. On the schedule, I just would like to point out, the general fund has an unassigned reserve of one point eight two six million. And every year, I like to compare this reserve to the future year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out of the general fund. So comparing the two thousand twenty-three general fund budget of five point seven million, this reserve is roughly thirty-two percent of next year's costs. From a benchmark perspective, in municipal government, twenty-five percent is usually a benchmark figure there as far as that reserve is concerned. So I wanted to point out that the reserve is healthy comparatively to other communities. Making our way to the governmental funds income statement, this is the same schedule, but just for revenues and expenditures over changes in fund balance. Overall, you'll note that for the general fund, there is a change in fund balance of about five hundred and fifty thousand. Put simply, revenues over expenditures really accounted for that change in fund balance. Moving the beginning fund balance from one point three five million to the ending fund balance of about one point nine million. So good year in the general fund overall for the city's governmental funds. You'll note that there was a change in fund balance of about thirteen point two million to about ten point five million. And when you peel back the layers on that change, it really is due to a planned drawdown related to the Platt Street construction project and the capital costs associated with the two thousand twenty-one A bond proceeds. So the bond proceed fund transferred out cost for various capital projects. And overall, those were the primary reasons for the two point seven million dollar fund balance decrease in your governmental funds. Finally, looking at the city's utility funds, your water utility, your wastewater, internal service fund, the health insurance fund, you'll note overall, there were positive changes in each fund this year. The water utility fund went from six hundred and twenty thousand to just over one million, and that can really primarily be pointed to the American Rescue Plan Act first tranche that was distributed during the fiscal year. You'll note this capital contribution of four hundred and forty-seven thousand really contributed to the overall change in that position during the year. Wastewater treatment, your sewer activity, had a small increase from about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, ending fund balance, ending that position of one point two million. Overall, non-major enterprise funds, your refus and other funds ended with a that position of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, a small increase of fifty-five thousand. And then the Internal Service Fund handling the costs associated with health insurance for the city increased about forty-eight thousand to three hundred and forty-one thousand. So overall, a positive year for the utility funds. As we make our way out of the financial statements, we're going to touch on the Single Audit Report. So a Single Audit Report as a reminder is when a unit of government spends greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant money during a given fiscal year. As you know, the city does a fantastic job of obtaining grants, and as a result, there are certain compliance requirements that need to be met if there are spending of those grants during a given fiscal year. So, starting with the opinions, the first section related on the opinions associated with government auditing standards, just noting that the results of our test indicated no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the standard. And then finally, as part of this year's Single Audit, you are required to audit major federal programs. So those are the high-dollar value federal programs, which we'll show you here in a short second. But overall, as part of this year's Single Audit, there were no instances of non-compliance or any items that could have a direct and material effect on the financial statement. So when you're working with federal grant money, these are the types of opinions you want to have, and we commend the city on monitoring those grants, accounting for those grants thoroughly and separately, and being able to comply with those individual elements of what each grant agreement calls for. So as part of the city's schedule of expenditures of federal awards, this schedule here provides a detailed breakdown of all of the federal grants during the fiscal year. So on page, this second page of the schedule, you'll note that roughly two point six million dollars of federal grant money was spent during the fiscal year. Of that two point six million, about one point six related to the Iowa Department of Transportation National Infrastructure Investment Program, which is directly related to the Platt Street Reconstruction Grant. So that was the major federal program that was tested. We looked at the invoices, the bidding documents, the approvals, and the reviews over those costs. And we didn't, like I mentioned, note any instances of non-compliance or questioned costs. Finally, the results section, you'll note that there are two sections. As far as our auditor results are concerned, one is the financial statements and one is the federal awards. The important piece being the federal awards, noting that we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as part of those compliance elements. The financial statements indicates some control deficiencies that are very common as far as the size of a unit of local government is concerned. But overall, a very positive year for the city, both from a financial audit and a single audit perspective. I would just like to conclude by saying, as part of working with the city for the first time this year, anytime you're working with an organization in the first year of an audit, it's inherently a challenging process in terms of understanding the control environment of the city, the individuals we work with gathering information. And I just, I wanted to give my thanks and my kudos to the folks that we work with at the city, primarily being Josh, Andrea, and Judy. They are a fantastic group that are organized. They care greatly about the day-to-day accounting function and finance function of the city. And I just wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude in working with them, and every other department at the city was a very smooth process that does last a long time, as I'm sure council knows, as far as an audit process is concerned. So with that, I again thank you to council for having me and allowing me to present, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Anybody have a question?
Thank you, Nick, for all your help and consultation along the way as well. Look forward to next year.
Likewise.
Okay, thank you. We don't have to take any action on this, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay. We'll go to item B, which is WHKS and the wastewater treatment final plans.
Let me just start off?
Yeah, well, I guess I'll provide some segue, so.
Thank you.
Bill, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name.
Bill Angerman with WHKS.
Bill Angerman, and Mike Shimkus from the East Dubuque office, who we most locally deal with. They're here to present the ninety percent phase of wastewater plants.
One hundred percent.
It's one hundred.
One hundred percent plants, correct.
Well, it's good to hear. So if you have any questions about what I think is our next major capital project, this is the time to kind of do those things. Now ask a few things as well. So, Bill, take it away.
Yes, we're going to run through a presentation. There's a couple of things at the end that we would want to cover, and I think Josh has those as your next couple of agenda items. So Josh, if you could pull up the PowerPoint there. And just real briefly, well, I guess we got to do it right away. So my role in the project is I'm the project principal, which means I oversee the design and all our staff that work on this. I'm also the chief operating officer of WHKS. So when Mike gets out of line in Dubuque, I got to come down and work with him. So, no, just kidding. So, next slide there. So just real quickly, we're going to try to keep this quick tonight, and some of the things we want to do are maybe providing a little bit of redundant information, but we want to make sure we memorialize this as well, so that the public, people have questions. They can understand and have some background of the thought process of the council and why we're doing this, because this is a very, very large investment for the community. So we want to make sure that we're spending these dollars in an efficient, really smart way. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the executive summary. We're just going to go to the big high level. Josh has some next items in there. So what we're requesting tonight, a little bit of why are we doing this, again, the background. You've seen this before, and we've talked about it, but again, part of educating the public and for anybody that's watching this, or will look back on this, we want to make sure we have some good basis and understanding. We'll give you a real high level of the design, just some of the major components. But obviously, if you have a few questions, you can follow up with myself or Jeff or Frank as well. The cost part is a big part of this. We're in some volatile times right now, so we are going to spend some time on costs and grants. Our staff and your staff have put a lot of effort into finding additional sources of funding, so we're going to talk about that. We'll probably spend the most amount of time there. And then lastly, the schedule and the recommendations. So, next slide there, thank you. Okay, so big picture, requested actions. What are we here tonight? So we are at the final plan stage. So later tonight, you're actually going to set the bid letting date, where we go out the bids to contractors, and we're going to get bids on the project so we can start construction in two thousand twenty-three. So if you remember the first one there, why are we doing this? We are doing this for a couple of different reasons, but the main reason, or main two reasons are you are mandated to do this. You have two actual compliance deadlines that you are meeting. We'll talk about specifically what they are. And then you have several portions of your plant that are just old, primarily related to what we call the solids handling portion. So again, so compliance and old equipment is why we're taking this on. The when part of this is, again, we're going to, tonight later in the next agenda item, we're going to set a bid letting date for January, so that would set us up for a spring of twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three construction start. And this project will take about a year and a half. It will take us all the way through the fall of twenty twenty-four. Why the long timeframe? Long timeframe, there's a lot of things to get done. Also, right now, we have a lot of equipment on the project, and equipment lead times, delays are probably some of the longest I've seen in my career. So we want to make sure that we don't constrict contractors so much that we drive our prices up. So there's a balance between getting things done quickly, efficiently, and/or paying more. So we're trying to strike a proper balance there. Proposed design features, three big main items. If, you know, these are really, if you really wanted to know specifically, there's the three things to remember. So the main one is the nutrient items that we have to address are phosphorus and nitrogen. And we will add what's called a biological phosphorus basin removal. So we're going to be doing a biological system, meaning we're not going to feed chemicals to remove the phosphorus. So long-term, that's your cheapest operation maintenance cost moving forward. So that's the first key component. The second one is, the second one, your compliance schedule is that disinfection. So basically, the wastewater, when it goes back into the river, we have to make sure there's no bacteria and nothing harmful in it. So you are on a compliance schedule to update that as well. So that's where we do ultraviolet disinfection, or basically, if you think, you know, kind of like not that different from your light bulbs. And here, we're going to basically irradiate and kill any bacteria in the wastewater. And then last one, the solids handling upgrade. I mentioned earlier, you have just some old, old equipment that really, a lot of it's not working. So again, and then the requested actions, I kind of covered it. So, next one, again, just big picture background. So the state of Iowa, all the states in the Mississippi River Basin were required to come up, required by the EPA to come up with a nutrient reduction strategy, saying this as a state is how we're going to address the dead zone, the Gulf of Mexico. So we have to meet those two limits up there, total nitrogen, total phosphorus. Your current plant cannot meet that, and you're not alone. Almost all plants in the state of Iowa are in the same boat. So a lot of projects, a lot of construction going on across the state. And as I mentioned, the third bullet there, replace the aging equipment. Again, we're trying to get ahead of this to keep your costs and your operation and maintenance expenses at a minimum. That's Josh, the next one. Big picture, just take a look at, I don't want to go all the way through this, but really the things in bold and black there, those are all the main components of this. I'm just going to pause a little bit. I don't plan to go through that, but again, if you want to reference back, if you have some questions, these are the main items that you'd be doing. Probably one of the things that I think we've done a good job of working with your staff is we've really spent a fair amount of time, what can we reuse, what can we repurpose? We really want to be careful before we build new tanks, new items. So for example, you know, the only real new thing that's in here is the bio P base, and almost everything else is repurposing. We're taking tanks that existed, we're here from before. Yeah, we're pulling out the equipment, putting new equipment in. So I think we have a really efficient design. Next item? This is the same view, this is a three-D view of that with the ground gone. So why is this important? Well, number one, I think it's kind of cool to show it, but number two is we're trying to also capture everything underground. One of the challenges with a reconstruction project is we are looking at old plans, you know, from decades ago, and we're trying to minimize unforeseen items, change orders, things like that. So we're trying to graphically represent to the contractor where everything is above and below ground. So we spent time with your staff going through old plans, and we're trying to get that all into our model so we can have, you know, as accurate of a picture of what we're going to have out there to really minimize changes, construction overruns, that stuff as we go on. So. By the way, stop me anytime. I'm trying to keep her quick, so. Okay, cost opinion and funding sources. So as we sit right now, cost opinion, total project cost fourteen point four million. So that does include the engineering costs as well. The first bullet there, right now, we're spending a little more time, just, I shouldn't say warning everybody, but just talking about bidding climate, the amount of work, delays in equipment, labor shortages, again, kind of unprecedented. So I just want to caution everybody, until we open bids in January, it's just our opinion, it's our best opinion, but it's our opinion what the bids are going to be. Josh has asked us if bids would come in high, what would we do? So we have identified some items. This project is a fairly mean project, meaning we tried to put only the essentials in there, but in case we would have some decisions, though, Josh did ask us to have some items that we could potentially delay, at least give, you know, staff and the council some options when we open bids. Potential funding sources, so we have received a community development block grant, so that was something staff and WHKS staff have applied for, it's for six hundred thousand dollars. The second one, the EPA, the STAG is called State Tribal Assistance Grant. So as a state, you know, the state of Iowa, our communities now are eligible for that. Right now, what we're being told is what, Josh, that's a possible funding of three point five million.
It's close to a certainty, but they just had to pass a federal budget.
They got to pass it, correct. So what we're being told is that that will occur this month.
Yeah.
So we're going to knock on wood, because that's a big item. So three point five million dollars is slated to come to McCoqueta, which would be fantastic. The third one is the state of Iowa, the wastewater treatment facility grant through the Iowa Facility Authority. It's a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we've applied for, but I believe we also have a good chance of receiving that. So ideally, what will happen is we'll have about four point six million dollars worth of grant money that go towards this project. The fourth item, so is a state revolving fund, so then the remainder of the project would be financed through a loan. Right now, the state of Iowa, it is, there is loan forgiveness. So we have been told, the city, if you do not receive the STAG grant, so the state will not let you in essence double dip. So if we would, if Congress doesn't pass a budget bill and we don't get that three point five million, the city would most likely receive one million dollar grant on the loan. So if that three point five goes away, I guess at the bare minimum, it'd be a million dollars. So that will be something we'll have to monitor moving forward the next couple of weeks. The second to the last bullet there, this is something called a sponsored project. I don't know if you, I think, the council, you're probably aware of that. So there's a restoration project on Prairie Creek. The state does offer ten percent of your total project cost back for a, basically a grant to work on water quality improvement projects. So again, as part of the state's response to, you know, the Gulf of Mexico, the dead zone, they're saying we're going to put these limits on plants for phosphorus nitrogen, but we're also going to incentivize communities to do projects to reduce erosion, different things in the watershed, controlling basically stormwater runoff. So that, and then not only that, I think, Josh, you had that on the agenda later to talk about. That is also the Prairie Creek project, which we're going to use these dollars for, is also going to be leveraged for an additional grant. So again, staff has been very creative in leveraging as much money as we can. And then, oh, the last one there, sponsored project application. So that was approved. So the project for Prairie Creek has been approved. Now we just need to move forward and finalize the design and get it done. So. All right, I'm going to pause there, because we just ran through, I just ran through a lot of items. So any questions on that, or others, we'll keep moving forward.
You're confident in that fourteen point four? Oh, no.
I'm reasonably confident. Mike? So in a normal world, you know, a normal bidding climate, so two years ago or pre-COVID, I would have told you that, you know, our target is usually to be within a plus or minus five to ten percent. The last year and a half, two years, we had bids all over the place. So I am nervous about that.
You're saying there's projects going all over. What's the availability of?
That's, we're also struggling to get contractors. We are on the front end of the season. So, you know, one of the things that, you know, staff, we talked about is, we said, let's get our project on the streets in December. We'll have a January bidding, so we will be one of the first projects. Also, I mentioned that extended completion date, a longer timeframe, that hopefully will give contractors more flexibility. More flexibility usually means better prices. Also, we have solicited all the equipment manufacturers and then working with them on delivery dates, making them aware of that. So we get, A, we get a competitive bidding environment, and B, we make sure people understand their deadlines. So if they can push the manufacturers, you know, they'll do that. So that was a long, long answer to your question.
Council member Collister probably asked the best two questions right away, but using the stormwater levy as an example, which never made it to council, was far beyond what we, it did make it to council, but it was too much, and we didn't have those bid layers in place to sit there and say, ah, we don't want that, because then we ventured into the territory of not giving everyone a fair shot. So I hope that we can mitigate some of those issues by building that in to the process and giving you guys choice of where you want to end up.
You made the comment about reusing some of the equipment we have, and with the DNR changing their mind weekly and different things like that, do you see any issues, you know, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, that the equipment you're using is going to be not valid anymore?
Not so much on the equipment side. Mainly what we're reusing is tanks. So, and I don't see that. And then generally speaking, if the DNR would change something, there's generally a ten-year period that you would have to come into compliance. So, but I think we're real confident that we'll be fine, so.
On your fourteen point four estimate, I believe you went from eleven a couple of years ago to thirteen point six four, five months ago, to now fourteen point four.
Right.
That's in response to what's happened. This wasn't from the beginning in twenty nineteen, correct?
That's correct. You know, one of the other things that we do is, you know, one of the things we want to do is we want to promote contractors. So, you know, we meet with contractors ahead of time, we talk to equipment suppliers, so we've been having those discussions, you know, so we can give you, you know, the most accurate number that we can. So, like I mentioned, we're reasonably confident that's a good number, so. But I am a little nervous about it.
Bill, you were mentioning equipment manufacturers. Are you single sourcing some of the specialty stuff, or is it, or is this going to be open to more than one?
There's a few items that there are not. There's only one manufacturer, or it's very limited to. So in those cases, either we find a competitor, most of the items we have, you know, at least two manufacturers, but there's a couple of items that. but there's a couple of items that there isn't two people that make it, or at least two people in this region. So then what we'll do is we'll make sure, you know, we get a guaranteed price ahead of time so that we know what that is going into a bid, so that we don't get an excessive markup or something to that effect, so.
In terms of change orders, if they happen, what do you typically see in a sewer plant versus a platt street?
So usually what we think of is, you know, when, when we're planning a project, we want to have a construction contingency. There are things that come up, particularly in an older plant where some of these things have been in since, you know, the middle of 19, you know, the middle of 19, what Jeff, 50s, 60s, you know, so. But, so usually what we do is we meet with staff and talk about what's a reasonable amount. And for this size project, usually what I would say is we should be thinking about 2% of the construction cost. So usually we would say a $250,000 contingency would be reasonable going into construction. Now, obviously my goal is that that number is zero, but there are going to, you know, invariably there comes to be something that we didn't know. You dig a hole and there's something, you know, you dig a hole and someone was buried, the pipe wasn't where the plan said. But our job, I view it as our job, what can I do? Our job is to make sure we capture as much of that as we can, that's why we spend as much time with, you know, Jeff and your wastewater staff, so. If we get more than 2%, it better be for a really unforeseen thing, not something, you know, that we just didn't spend the time or effort on, so. Hopefully that's a
Yeah.
reasonable answer.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was, yeah, I was thinking that, you know, you called it a 2%, I was looking for, you know, is that 5% marker there is? Three or four, but yeah, 2% is your number.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, different cities and different city managers will, you'll have different approaches. Some will say, let's ride with higher contingency, it's kind of a comfort level. I personally don't like big contingencies because I think then people are more willing to just spend it. So I think it's also a challenge to our staff and your staff to keep this thing on, on task, so that's kind of our approach.
Mike, when he was here, showed us, you guys use a radar technology or a LiDAR to, to map it out. It looked like an IBM Watson commercial you see on, on TV, the 3D and the rotating and things like that, so. I hope it's as accurate as technology's supposed to do, you know.
But it's, it's accurate, it's just whether, you know, the things we can't see, you know, where we've imported that in and drawn that in off of old plans, that, that, those are accurate. So we're going to, we are going to be relying on some items from, you know, 50 years ago, so.
Yeah.
We've just been through a project that's turned into an engineering nightmare. And I for one am a little gun shy about just turning that kind of money over to another engineer. What kind of, how are you going to make me feel good that you have actually found all the problems? I know you can't find all the problems, but know as much about this as you possibly can before you put a shovel in their own.
How am I going to make you confident? I think what it's going to be is that
It's going to happen when you come back with a change order because you missed something.
Well, ideally I don't come back because I missed something or we missed something, we're going to come back because we're going to say there was something that we're not aware of, there was, you know, a, a challenge to that effect. If it's something we missed, it will be to acknowledge that and tell you that, and then, you know, to, to work our way through that. What would give you confidence, I can think confidence is that your staff and our staff have been through all your plans. Our staff has spent time at their plant, we've gone through all the old plans, all the old equipment lifts. We've had, you know, our staff on site, we've had suppliers on site looking at the equipment. So we've done what would be traditional due diligence in the industry and due diligence for our firm.
Can tell you what gives me confidence is that bridge. When they came up with grants, they did a lot of the legwork on finding reasons to make the, or opportunities to make the project less. I think they, that was a good preview of what we're going to see here, in my opinion.
And we do track that as a firm, though I probably can't spit those numbers off the top of my head, but we do track. Okay, once we bid a project, what's our average, you know, that a price goes over, project goes over. And generally speaking, I shouldn't say generally, I don't know the actual number, but I think our firm average is less than that 2%. So again, that's something that we feel is really important because we understand when, you know, if there's a change and it comes back to the state council, nobody wants to hear that, nobody wants to see that, and that makes people unhappy, and then we don't, we don't continue to work for you. So, you know, that's our goal, our goal is to, you know, do all your projects for a long time. So we have to, we have to put out good plans in order to do that.
Okay.
We got a couple more slides, so. Okay, these are just kind of wrapping up, so here, here we are tonight, so, you know, in essence, by what you have later on the agenda, you're going to approve the final plans, you're going to set a letting date, you're also going to set a public hearing date as well. The public hearing date is December 19th, and a bid letting date in January on the 19th. And then there's some other things that, that'll happen after that, we'll award the project. And then because this is a state revolving fund alone, there's some environmental hearings, some different things that happen. The loan application, kind of working our way through, again, we're geared towards the spring. There are some approvals that are still needed, we still need Iowa DNR approval, we still need some other sources of approval, but we can't obtain that approval until, you know, we do some of these other steps. So there are some steps here that are really going to ramp up over the next several weeks and months, so. Let's see, I think I covered everything there, oh, and then completion, ultimately what we're looking for is an October 1st, 2024 completion date, so.
And that's actually past the DNR deadline, but they're granting us an extension?
Correct, so the two compliance dates were sooner than this, they have preliminarily told us they will approve this, but they can't approve it until we approve the plans tonight and formally submit them, so. Again, that was part of the, the thought process with staff, that we want to have a longer window of time to give contractors more flexibility. Kind of like if I told you, I want you to, you know, fix the plumbing at my house or install a new toilet, but I told you you got to do it in two days or two weeks, you're going to charge me more. So again, we want to, want to make sure we're really listening to what contractors are telling us and what the market's dictating. Okay, and then I think last one, so this is just kind of summarizing what we've talked about. I don't know if I really need to hit any of these, we kind of talked about the funding strategy, so I think we've covered all these items through here, so. I'll pause, that was a lot of stuff quickly and I kind of went fast, so.
I do have one question for you.
Yes.
Once the construction kind of begins, I might be getting the cart before the horse here, but once the construction begins, like, will there be sections of town that will be going without water, like, once the construction's going on on a project this size?
There would not be, nope. So everything would be contained within the plant site itself and all, everything in the plant, so. The general person in the public should not notice anything as far as service from the city.
Okay, I was, like I said, I was just kind of worried about, like, our equipment is old and I mean, you never know what you're going to get when you get into something like that, but I know there were some citizens that were concerned that we'd have to go without water for a while, so. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else got anything?
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and I think the other items are agenda items that obviously we'll stick around for a little bit here to see if there's any questions on those, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any action we have to take on this?
No.
Next is Christie Carr for the annual chamber quarterly report, she's unable to be here tonight, but did drop off a little summary. I'm not going to read it, but I'm sure if somebody out there wants to see it, we can provide them with a copy. We move on now to item eight, new business. Item A is a resolution setting December 19th at 6:00 PM as a public hearing date regarding plans, specifications, form of contract for the wastewater treatment plant project.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyons, seconded by Coleman. We have any discussion here? Then go ahead and take the roll.
Colister? Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, item B is a resolution authorizing invitation to bid for the wastewater treatment plant project. Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Holm, do we have any discussion here? Then go ahead and take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution awarding a professional services agreement with WHKS in the amount of $152,500 for the Prairie Creek recreational area and sponsored water quality project.
Thank you, Mayor, this is clearly tied to the presentation and Destination Iowa and many things heading into the project and the sponsored project that we have, and they've done a lot of great work on. But as Bill mentioned, it's tied to Destination Iowa, we're ultimately submitting up there for a project at Prairie Creek. The person that would be in charge of this, Megan, for WHKS has been absolutely wonderful leading up, up to this point and working with the DNR and getting us what we need to get to that point where Destination Iowa can fit for us. We're extremely happy to work with them and based on their present involvement with the project, the sponsored water quality project and everything Megan has done to us up to this point, we're recommending a service contract to finish out the design of that stream bank improvement. And I even followed up with Destination Iowa managers to make sure that this would be a fit for the grant reimbursement. They didn't tell me yes right off the phone, but they will be listening to an amendment next year when we submit one, after we get construction bids and everything, so. We plan to propose that, for the interim though, this is something we have to do anyway. So it's for you tonight to approve and get us moving on the Prairie Creek project.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item D is a resolution of the corporate authority relating to the retirement healthcare funding plan.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll try not to bore everyone with too much detail, and please stop me if I do. So this is, this is somewhat related to what an HSA would be a health savings account, but this is a Section 115 trust and somewhat related to VIBA, and the Finance and Personnel Committee covered some ground on what this is. And this program doesn't cost the city any money, in fact, it could save it just a little bit of money, and it's a pass-through for healthcare savings for employees to realize some investment gains and ultimately spend their account on health-related needs. The core difference between an HSA and, and this program is that when someone actually separates service, when they walk out the door here someday, whether it's retired or, or leaving the job, and that they can use their assets to pay for healthcare premiums, is, that's kind of the big difference, so. I view this as a good employee benefit and it's also not going to cost us any money. This is a popular program that's growing in, in unions, and we have to come up with two funding classes for folks to fund this, and we've done so with the help of our employee group to come up with those two classes, the active members and separating members. We've had a, an understanding, I guess, if we have a December enrollment in this program, if someone were to sign up for the separating class, that would indicate to Frank, to myself, well, who's actually intending on retiring this year, because that allows them to transfer in a number of other opportunities into this account to spend. And so we tried doing this the best way possible for, for us and to help out with our planning. There's a couple of resolutions here tonight that are related to NPPFA benefits, but this one's specifically rated the Section 115 trust, and I think it's going to be a great program for the employees. I don't know if it was needed or not, but I included a compounding interest chart and what that can do for an employee if they take advantage of this over 25 years, so I think those are significant dollars to keep in mind. Do you have any questions on this?
What do you hope to have this implemented?
We'd like to start enrollment here this December and start this next calendar year, meaning January.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Holm, do we have any discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item E is a resolution of the City of Macocota to authorize the addition of the NPPFA Deferred Compensation Plan as an employment benefit.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, this is easier than the last one, but this basically adds a 457 vendor for the city. Right now we only have ICMA benefits, and I can tell you that the NPPFA, I guess, expense ratio across the board is supposed to be a little bit better. So this will give people some options, should they, should they so choose to use them.
Do we have a motion?
Coleman.
We got a motion by Rickroll, seconded by Colister. And if we have no discussion, go ahead and take the roll.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item F is a resolution appointing me, Tom Meserly, as member of the Waste Authority of Jackson County Board.
Second.
Motion by Simonson, seconded by Rickroll. Have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Okay, item G is a resolution accepting the 2023 calendar year budget of the Macocota Municipal Electric Utility.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Simonson, seconded by Holm. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item H is a resolution approving the bid for materials from January 1, 2023 to November 30, 2023. Joshua Frank, do you have anything to add to that?
Just thank you, and you have the two people here in front of you that, that manage this part of it, so.
Basically every, Mr. Mayor members of the council, every year we go out for bids for concrete and aggregate, and these are the, these are the numbers that we got back.
What do they compare to like last year? I don't remember.
Uh, the rock went up a little bit, the concrete went up a lot.
Wasn't it in the 90s or something?
No, it was like 120 last year. Now it's 140, 44.
So move.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Coleman? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item A is a resolution accepting bids for abatement snow removal.
Same thing, they went out for bids and Marty Blue Construction was the only one that responded with an offer on this. And Frank and I actually talked a little bit about this today, when this actually happens. Do we even have last season, the instance where they were put to use?
We probably, Jan, do you remember, I think we maybe had one or two times where we called out Casey Castle?
Yep.
To do, so.
This is not Casey Castle, but Marty Blue. Is Casey Castle our construction?
No, he, he was the one that got the bid last year.
I see, I'm sorry, yeah.
So move.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item J is a resolution accepting bids for the use of snow removal equipment for the 2022-2023 season.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is basically if we get a really bad storm and we need help removing the snow from the downtown loop in a timely fashion. And if we need help doing intersections or if we have a breakdown in a major, major, major blizzard.
So move.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Holm? If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, that item passes. Item K is a discussion and possible motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $4,603.32 submitted by Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete for the South Main Trail Project.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, this is the primary change order on the South Main Connector Trail. It adds 4,600 to the contract because there was a pedestal that had to be moved, is that correct, Frank?
There was, there was a lot of buried items underneath where the future, where the, where the trail was, like the manhole was buried, and there was some water valve boxes that were buried. And during the process of, of doing the excavation, those were all hit because nobody knew they were there. So these items just fix all the buried items that we unearthed.
So we need your approval tonight so I can sign off on it. I wouldn't do so without your, your blessing so that we can get a bill out.